8:30 a.m. on Tuesday, April 6th. This is the regular meeting of the town and the Canaan Board of Selectmen. And the first matter is to amend the agenda. I understand Tiger does not have tree worn bids, so we're item number 13 from the agenda. Do I have a motion? Kathleen, second by Nick, on favor. Okay, so otherwise, this is a virtual meeting on the broadcast on channel 79. Meeting by Zoom. We will take comments from the public on agenda items by email only, addressed to B O S distribution at cana CT dot gov. That's B O S distribution at new Cana C T dot gov. Tucker will watch for comments, and if we have any, we'll read them before the end of the meeting. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, the minutes for the March 23 regular meeting and the March 26 special meeting. Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
None.
None. I move we approve the minutes of those two meetings.
Second.
Nick's seconds, all in favor? Okay. I just mentioned public comments. And then we put item number three, change of employment status. Is Cheryl doing this? Cheryl Jones, good morning.
Yes, good morning. I would like to present Scott Becker to you. He is currently with us on a part-time basis as a building inspector in speaking with Brian, who is also on the need for this position to go full-time, especially in the spring. Brian is noticing a huge increase in building permits and needing staff. So we would like to take Scott from part-time to full-time. He currently does have his certificate as a building inspector and will be working towards a commercial inspector. Brian, I don't know if you have anything you want to jump in and say?
No, we are experiencing a high volume of permit activity. And for those who are, may not be aware of this, I'm sure that you all are. Scott replaced Paul, who took Fred's job as fire marshal.
So the money is in the budget?
Yes, it's already budgeted as a full-time position.
Kathleen, you have a question?
And Brian, just remind us, we have two then full-time building inspectors?
In addition to myself, yes.
In addition to yourself, okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Nick?
Nope, none here.
I move we approve the request from HR to change the employment status of Scott Becker from part-time building inspector to full-time builder inspector. Have a second?
Second here.
Nick's seconds for the discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you. Farmers Market, next item on our agenda is review and approval of a new location for the Farmers Market in the Lumber Yard Lot beginning May 8th, 2021.
I'll kick this off if you'd like. We have Patricia Spogani and Lexi Gacy. There they are on the call today. They're going to take you through the proposed changes to the location of the Farmers Market and their layout plans, which were on your tablet, but I will also share the screen. Patricia, are you going to start, or is Lexi starting? How do you want to do it?
Good morning, I'm here.
Go ahead, Lexi.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for for our proposal, and we really appreciate the community's support. Everybody pulled together to make this move as smooth as possible, so it's really appreciated. Tucker, do you have the proposal?
Sure, here we go. Here we go. Can you see that?
Yep, you can go to the next page.
All right.
We've looked at several locations very carefully, and we tried to study the traffic flow patterns and pick out the lot that was most viable. And we seem to always go back to the lumberyard lot. Google Maps has the address at 244 Elm Street. Across from Carl's Chevrolet. It has excellent access from the train, so hopefully we'll get some people coming up.
Lexi, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm not sure how to make it better because my mic is on 100%.
All right, just try not to move. I think it was when you were moving. Okay.
Oh, okay.
So do you want to go through this slide?
I put together the vendor applications, and they're submitted to the health department. I spoke to Officer Ferraro, Lieutenant Ferraro. And we do have, we are scheduled for crossing guard.
I can't hear at all. Maybe if Patricia can.
Patricia, you have to do it.
All right, all right. You can hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, apologies, Lexi. I know it's hard when the technology doesn't work. Yeah, so we're pretty excited to be moving to a new location. What's going to have onsite parking, as you all know, which I think is going to be a great advantage to the people who come to shop at the market. You can see from the map that we're proposing having a slightly different traffic flow than the arrows that are on the pavement. Hopefully that works okay. That's one of the reasons that we want to have the onsite crossing guard to start with, so that we can basically, we'll have essentially two major parking areas associated with the market. So keeping those kind of separate might work better than if people get used to coming in one way or the other, than having people cross diagonally across the market. You can see the location where our carrot is. That's basically the space we'll be planning to take up with the nearly 30 vendors that have signed up so far. I think it's going to be convenient to downtown, convenient for shoppers and guests. So with that, as Lexi was saying, we will have the onsite crossing guard. I know she's spoken several times to Lieutenant Ferraro, and we're in agreement, at least to get started, that we'll do that. Going forward, you know, after the first few weeks, we may not need the crossing guard at Elm Street. Certainly, that lot has good visibility for entrances and exits. We'll see how it goes. One of the reasons, for those of you who may not be aware, that we wouldn't necessarily have the crossing guard every week, as well as that it's the major expense associated with the market is to pay for that crossing guard. There really are a few other expenses, except for cones and tape and with the COVID guidelines, having extra wipes and hand sanitizer and things like that. But that's the key reason. I think if it goes well after the first few weeks, we'll talk with Lieutenant Ferraro again and, you know, reassess that. One thing, thank you to Kevin and Tucker for everything, for helping us work through the details on this, and Laura Budd from the chamber. We also need to have access, the vendors need to have access to restrooms, so we'll be able to do that using the train station restrooms. So we appreciate that. Just a little aside, Bartlett Trees offered to provide free tree seedlings, so we're going to hopefully arrange that for the first weekend. I think Lexi needs to confirm that. So we'll be putting a press release out to the advertiser and the new Canaanite with the confirmed details in the next few days. But we're hoping that they'll be there. That will be a nice way to celebrate the opening, as well as Mother's Day weekend. And all of the vendors through Lexi have submitted their applications to the health department, to Jen and Chris, so I think we're in good shape there. If we look up just the market guidelines, we are going to continue to require masks in the market and social distancing, along with that, no samples and no pets, which is consistent with any farmer's market in terms of no pets. One thing that is different, though, consistent with what, how we all behave in grocery stores, shoppers will be able to select their own produce. We think that food handling has been safe now. We know enough about the virus to know that people are know-to-wash produce when they bring it home. And it will also keep things, traffic moving better in the market if the vendors don't have to do that for shoppers. Then in terms of what we are still working on, publicity, because we need to make sure that all of the folks that come to the market regularly know that we have a new location. So we worked with Tucker and Laura Budd to put a pretty good plan together. So we'll have to be working on that over the next few weeks to make sure that when people come to town, they know exactly where to go. So we'll be doing all the usual things, using email to our respective distribution lists, putting signs up downtown. We'll put a sign at the old center school lot. We'll look for a couple of sandwich boards there, so that people drive into town on Saturday and looking for the market, they'll be redirected over to the lumberyard. And since we are moving, a special shout out to Tiger and his staff for helping us ready the lot for guests, mostly pedestrian guests. So we're still working through those, but we should be in good shape by that Saturday. That's really, really it. We'll keep the same hours, Saturdays through November. And the other thing we have here, the next page, is the list of vendors, if anybody wanted to see the layout.
Hi, Patricia, can, sorry, can you just go back to the earlier slide? Just, I just wanted to ask, on the crossing guard, did you say they were going to be up on Elm Street for pedestrians? Or down in the parking lot where the green arrows are for entrance and access?
We would have, the idea is to have the crossing guard at the street to make sure the traffic, so it really isn't for, there will be some pedestrians, I assume, walking, because we do get a fair number of people who walk to the market every week, with kids, bikes, whatever. But the idea would be to make sure that the cars entering from Elm Street, entering and exit are safely entering traffic.
Okay, and then the pedestrian arrows, just, you know, in and out, that's only the guide that will provide. Will there be any other special walking area from their parked car into the entrance, whether it's on the, along the train tracks or above, closer to Elm Street?
Yeah, fair question. So the inbound arrow going into the market, where that is that green area parallel to the train tracks, we will still have all the shoppers coming in, entering the market there. We want to try to still encourage one-way traffic into and out of the market. So that green arrow is, again, people will be lining up there, so that'll be the one-way in, which means people, you know, may be parking in the train station lot itself or in the lot at Park in Park and Pine. So we imagine people will walk across through there. I did not envision doing any kind of special walkway or blocking off inside the lot.
Okay.
You know, thinking about it, I don't, you know, we don't want to eliminate spaces, and we're just going to make sure people are, you know, being responsible. So I'm hopeful that we don't need to, you know, basically block off or create another block off parking.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The other thing there, I'll just point out, we do recognize, sorry, thanks Tucker, that we do have a number of residents who come that are, need accessible parking. So we're going to work with Tiger for a way to mark off those parking spots that are in blue, so that we have parking that's adjacent to the entrance and exit of the market. So those will be, I think, some temporary, they won't be permanent in the lot, but we'll work out something there. So any other questions on the layout or the design? Okay, and then.
So Patricia, is this new spot worse, the same or better than the center school lot, in your estimation?
Well, we've talked about it with the vendors, and we actually, all the, most of the vendors met at the lot to check it out. I think everybody's pretty excited in terms of having the onsite parking, because that'll be much more convenient for the shoppers. Though, one thing that we will miss is the shade from the center school lot, especially in the heat of summer when vendors come with produce. So that's, I think, the only thing that we think there might be, you know, we might have to work around with, whether that's extra tents or whatever. But otherwise, I think it'll be, it'll be a, you know, a welcome change to have the onsite parking and have the extra space should we want to expand to more vendors.
And Nick, if I may, when we were looking at all the potential spots that were potential spots for them to move to, one of the priorities that, or the goals, we were trying to think of any ways that it could complement the downtown, you know, take advantage of the foot traffic of people in the downtown. And we felt, while we would have liked it maybe a little bit closer to downtown, we felt that this will work both well for merchants and for the market in leveraging people parking once and maybe running an errand in town, as well as going down to the market. The time will tell.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty close. I mean, I think it's arguably closer than the center school lot.
And we're, and speaking with Laura, when we were talking about our publicity, you know, we're going to try to really leverage that in marketing for the market. The market's going to have all their vendors market it that way as well, so I think we might be on to something.
Right, and you know, we've come a long way since last year, when we were talking about drive-through market last year. So it's, we're all looking forward to it, so thank you to the.
I mean, I would think that you may have a better chance of not having to have a crossing guard, police, you know, presence there at the lumberyard than at center school lot, because of, you know, the traffic flow on South Avenue.
Well, and you had, at center school, you had a lot of your market goers parked actually on South Avenue. And also, right, so this will all be contained in the lot, which isn't seeing a lot of activity right now, especially on Saturday.
I will say.
No activity.
Right, one of the challenges we always have is people, we have a lot of dogs in town and a lot of, you know, certainly folks bring their dogs downtown to walk. Market guidelines, state guidelines, really prohibit having animals in the market. So I think, you know, there is the cross, the entrance here that comes in, there's a walkway that comes in from Grove Street to that parking lot. And while we were there that Saturday, there were probably five people that walked their dogs in through the lot, just walking downtown, right? So I think that's the one thing that we, through that entrance, which we really can't block, is just having to watch that. So we'll probably have to have, you know, an extra volunteer who's there at that entrance or exit, just to make sure we don't, people have dogs, to encourage them to walk around over to Elm Street.
So to be clear, the prohibition on pet's dogs, even leashed dogs, is a state health guideline.
That's right.
And also, just so you know, we have Keith Ritchie of the Parking Commission has looked at the plan and is fine with it. Tiger's looked it over, fine with it. And we also reached out to the merchants in the area to make sure that there weren't any issues there. So everybody's given it their blessing.
Right, and are respectful of the fact that the market's going to be right across from Walter Stewart, so, and down the street from Acme, and, you know, hopefully we'll be good neighbors. You know, that's our goal, is to be good neighbors and respectful of the other shoppers in the area.
Yeah, I see that. Personally, I said is a big win, because, you know, you shop at Walter Stewart's, you go across the street and shop at the Farmers Market.
We hope so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thanks very much. So you need to vote.
Well, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was trying to say, I have a few questions. Tucker, could you put the?
Green back, sure.
Green back up. So I, go back down to where it says note. Local nonprofits may request a table 10 at the market, max of twice a season and not more than twice in one month. So I guess the market will be defined by cones and stuff, but it is a public parking lot. And I just wanted to question whether or not the town really has a role in proving tables and tents, other than the market. We can take this offline, but I just, that occurred to me that I wasn't aware that there was a policy at the center school lot on nonprofits having tents and tables, but let's follow.
Let me, let me just clarify that. We, I think it's basically one, max two at any given week. So for example, the Beautification League, the beginning and end of the season puts a table up, and we talk to folks about who we are, and in the fall, we sell our the Christmas ornaments that are sold on behalf of the Historical Society. The library had a table, the League of Women Voters had a table last year during, you know, before the elections. So it's one or two tables maximum. It's not like there's 10, but that's how that's worked.
But that was within the confines of the market?
It was, it's within the confines of the market, absolutely.
Right, and I'm just wondering perhaps whether or not there might be an opportunity to have nonprofits have tables out in the other part of the parking lot.
And you'll lose parking spaces, though.
Well, let's, let's, let's look at that in terms of the configuration. The other thing is, is the market itself a member of the chamber, and are the vendors members of the chamber?
The market is a member of the chamber.
And not the vendors?
Individual vendors are not. There may be one or two might be, but the market is a member of the chamber.
Yes.
And then what was my third question?
The start date is May 8th, goes through November.
I guess I'll ask a question, Kevin, if I just, while you're thinking of yours. Just as we approach election season, is, you know, either party or any candidate that's running for any office, are they considered part of this nonprofit limitation? Or is there, is there any consideration given to that?
I've had candidates come throughout the years, and they've roamed throughout the market, greeting people, talking to people, and handing out their different forms of information without any problems. So that's something that we've already had at the Farmers Market, and we feel that any candidate that wants to come and thank people for being at the Farmers Market and talking about their issues is welcome. Does not cause a specific issue. The market itself is universal, so we patronize everybody that comes. Anybody is welcome.
But Lexi, they don't take a table. They just roam, as you said. They don't.
Correct, they haven't taken a table in the past. It's been individuals who come to the market.
Yes, Kathleen, that sort of addresses my third point.
Okay.
Yeah, it is a public parking lot, and just like Elm Street, the town, the public sidewalks in front of various vendors or retailers. My, you know, the market doesn't pay the town rent. It doesn't have exclusive jurisdiction, you know, within the footprint of the market. I view those walkways as kind of like the equivalent of sidewalks in a public parking lot. So I think that anything that's done there has to be in accordance with town policy with respect to what happens on public property. And.
Actually, discuss the bottom row, where the railroad tracks are. There is a sidewalk, kind of, for a passable use, so that individuals who go through the parking lot don't have to actually go through the market to get to the Grove Street access.
Well, that's important, that we not restrict access to the train station for people that are coming from the western side of the, you know, that do walk from Grove Street to the train, because people do walk to the train. So I think it's important to have that passageway along the train tracks.
Right, so that'll be clear, free and clear.
Yeah, my final question is, are the vendors allowed to leave before 2 o'clock?
I discourage it, mainly because people who come before 2 o'clock, if they see vendors leave, they think they're missing out on something and are discouraged from coming back later on.
Well, those would create safety concerns, you know, with trucks trying to pull out. So I wonder how strictly we enforce that. It's the same thing we do with the sidewalk sales, as far as, you know, you can't leave before a certain time, because it does create safety issues.
Yes, it does, as well, more so in the morning, if vendors come and try to set up after 9:30.
Right.
9:30 and 10 o'clock, as patrons come before market hours to get in line. It does create a hazard. So I discourage vendors from showing up after 9:30 as well.
So basically, the same rules apply that have applied at center school lot, but we ought to be mindful of whether or not we're going to have considerations that we haven't thought about as we go into this new location, so. But it is, you know, a town, a public lot, public property, and so, you know, the enforcement of moral rules that occur in public property is something that we will be mindful of and don't have any controversies over this location, so.
We are in complete agreement, so anything, you know, that's why we're glad to have this opportunity to show the plans, any questions that come up, let's figure it out in advance. And we welcome you all to come, and we can do a ribbon cutting for opening again, like we did last year.
So I guess we're, the agenda items to review and approve, the location, so we're approving the location. I suppose we can vote on the location, but the the rules and regulations and the process is something that's, it's an ongoing responsibility for the town and a public parking lot. So I move we approve the location of the Farmers Market, the Lumber Yard Lot.
Second.
Kathleen, seconds for the discussion. All in favor? All right, thank you, Patricia and Lexi. Good luck with the new location.
Thank you, and thanks again to the town for your support.
That brings it to Tiger.
Hey, uh, this is for the, well, good morning, sorry. The, this is for the survey and design service, excuse me, for connectivity of sidewalks on Gower Road, directly in the vicinity of South School. Sidewalks on Gower actually stretch from South Avenue to the entrance to South School, and then from Old Stanford Road eastward to South School as well. There's nothing that traverses across South School's property. There is a walkway along South School into the property, but nothing along the right away. So we ask basis the address to give us a proposal for survey and design services for these stretches of sidewalk to connect the two together. The price is $19,800 was their estimated fee. They've done excellent work for us in the past. They were the ones that designed Main Street. We just hired them to do, we had hired them to do Park Street and Richmond Hill, and we'd like them to continue forward with this work.
Questions for Tiger?
Hey Tiger, sorry about this. I forgot to ask you this question yesterday. On the inland wetlands permitting, is that a fee that goes to the town? Or is that a state permit?
There are, there are fees. We don't pay a fee to the town. We do pay a fee to the state. This is actual to develop the permit itself. The, where the sidewalk would go on the northern side, there are wetlands directly adjacent to it down the hillside. So we're within the, we're within the buffer, so we would need a wetland permit at that time. So that portion of it, the $2,800, would cover the permitting, the design, the permitting fee for that. Their portion of the fee.
Okay.
Okay. You're welcome.
No further questions?
None here.
Okay, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Cabazis De Angelis for survey and design on Gower Road sidewalks for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Do I have a second?
Second here.
For for the discussion. All in favor? That brings us to items.
Thank you.
Saks CHP plant project.
Joe?
Good morning. Kevin, I just wanted to confirm that the BOE wanted to review and take action on this as well, so we'll just make this contingent upon that, or or do you want to defer for a couple of weeks?
No, we're going to take it up now, Joe.
Okay, great. So the Saks Middle School CHP, which is Combined Heat and Power Unit Project, was put out to bid. We received four bids on the project. We had a comprehensive review. That was performed by the Department of Public Works, New Canaan Public Schools, the Project Consulting Engineers OLA, and the Towns Energy Council MHR. That meeting happened in March and there was a consensus that. That Aegis was the lowest bidder and they had a complete scope. That was consistent with the RFP and contract documents. So this will be a summer project for at Saks. The electrical and heating savings is estimated between. To be between fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year, which is a seven to eight and a half year payback on this system. So the Department of Public Works is looking to enter into a contract with Aegis Services LLC. For four hundred and nine thousand plus a contingency of forty one thousand for a total of four hundred and fifty thousand to complete phase one of the Saks CHP plant project. And this and this would be, you know, just subject to the approval of the Board of Education. And decisions on some alternates that have been proposed for this project.
Joe, what does it mean, phase one?
Well, phase phase one means that this is not the complete buildout of the CHP plant. There is a. They were we're trying to right size the unit, so we're going to put in either a seventy kilowatt system or a seventy five kilowatt system. And then in the we're going to let it run for a year, get good data on the system. And then there'll be a future project if cost effective and feasible, which we think it will be. In an in a future, future year, future budget.
Questions for Joe?
Yeah, sorry. Can you just that the future budget would be evaluating what in addition to what we already have or replacement or what can you?
So so we can add on additional units to this system, so it's kind of like a, you know, a boiler plant, you have two or three. So this one is is sized based on the energy usage. So we think that we're going to have somewhere around a hundred and fifty kilowatt system in total eventually. But that there's also other energy initiatives which are knocking down that load. So, you know, between solar and the boiler system and everything getting more efficient. That's why we're going to take that year and look at the system to to get the sweet spot for the size of the final plant size. And and also to understand all the other energy initiatives so that we can size it correctly.
Okay, check. Thank you. And the Selectmen's Building Advisory Committee, are they they're going to be reviewing this as well and? Either coming back to us or are they going to the Board of Ed? What what is their role in the process?
Yeah, Kevin, would you like to? Are we going to put this on the on the agenda? I know there was talk about putting it on the agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna we're gonna review this next Monday morning. I should mention that Aegis is the contractor that that built our. CHP based water treatment plant. And and they they their bid was the lowest considerably lower by. With respect to some other bidders. But they bid to for two alternatives. One would be the two unit seventy thirty five kilowatt hours each kilowatt each. Versus one seventy five, and that decision needs to be made, and we thought we'd the advisor committee. Which is designed to spend more time on. On pro. Capital projects. We'll discuss it next Monday morning.
But I would note either way that that the they've agreed four hundred and nine thousand is the exact same price, whether we take the basis of design or their voluntary alternate for the different size units. So either way, the contract would read the same.
I would also mention that, you know, this is having CHP at various facilities is integral to our. Understanding with Eversource that if we do enough gas utilization with town projects and things like Kane and Parish and stuff, that they will bring gas to West West School. And so that's why we need to continue to move forward. The Board of Finance authorized an additional CHP project. But I think it was framed in terms of Saks and the billing committee, the advisory committee next week will talk about moving that to the high school as well. There's a much greater opportunity with savings at the high school.
Right, that was the thought, is to take that and move forward and then pause on Saks for a year. Gather data and then come back.
Any questions, Nick?
None here.
I move that we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Aegis Energy in the total amount of. Four hundred and. Fifty thousand dollars for a phase one Saks CHP plant project.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I think I know John, I think John got a new trailer. We got a couple of trailers for.
Tucker, you got to meet Steve.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Laughing Center number seven.
That would be me. You guys hear me okay? Yeah?
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, so you hear me. So at the Laughing Community Center, we have. A pumping system, oil pumping system for the boiler. There we there. There's two pumps there for resiliency and pump failed, but also the control board of controls, the the program of these pumps failed too. These are proprietary systems. We're. Not in much of what trying to find out the original install of this, but it's about approximately sixteen years old. And it totally failed out. John Digger, he currently, his company currently manages the systems we have in other buildings. They have the maintenance contract and he's the owner, the proprietor on town hall. So I had them go out, check it all out. The circuit board electronics, nothing works on the system for whatever reason. So we like to replace it with a new system. And have John Digger, you know, to maintain it with the one with the other buildings at the same time. Fifteen thousand seven hundred thirteen to remove and replace the system. It's redundant. And it'll work well with the new boiler system. And I'm not, I can't explain why to sale that sixteen years old. We have systems much older than this. I don't have an answer for that. It failed.
Questions? The question I have is whether or not we. We try to pursue the idea of bringing gas up to the Laughing from Stanford, Old Stanford Road where it's in the in the road and. You know, we 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 placed the boiler here because it failed, but to further invest in oil. Unless it's an emergency, I wonder if we might talk to Tiger about this yesterday, explore that option. So I'd like to discuss this further with Bill. I wasn't aware we were putting this on the agenda. Until yesterday, so maybe Friday, so.
Well, we we do have dual fuel boilers here. It'll take both oil and gas, which, you know, was part of the idea of hoping to get gas up there someday. The cost to get gas up there is where we're at a sticking point right now, my last conversation with Eversource. They want us to bring it up that back hill, bring it into the park and running it down the pool. It's an expensive. Take on I I think for us to do that, so we're kind of arguing with them that they should be doing this. Given the timeline and and the setbacks we have in COVID nineteen, even if we got them to bring the gas line up there, I could not promise you for sure. It's like it's going to be there this summer.
Right.
And they're like a year or so behind in the game with. And there's a lot of work to get that gas line up in up that hill. We have to go through wetlands, we got to cross a brook. Yes, there's a lot of hurdles to get over. It's all doable, but it's time consuming to get all over all those hurdles.
Right. Problem is the project's about six months to a year out from if we started now on their side of the design. So we run that, we run that risk of not being ready. One, we use it a little bit during the summer for dehumanification, and then two, we wouldn't be ready for the heating season come next year.
Yeah, let's let's take this offline, but let's approve this for now and we'll talk about the. The need to go forward with it, so.
And what one one good part about this system, that if we did get gas up there, this system will not go to waste. Because I'm mirroring the one at town hall, so I will have another backup parts and what have you for town hall for future, just so, you know, we're not going to just throw anything away when it's over. I guarantee you that. That's the thought, Dynas. It's gonna it's gonna be good parts to have on the shelf in the future if we go to gas over there.
I just recall that Eversource said no one's ever gone back to oil if they if they have gas, so.
Yeah, but we have generators and stuff that uses pumps, so that's it's it's good stuff.
Okay, anyway, I move to approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with John C. Digger, Inc. in in a total of seventeen thousand two eighty four. For the installation of a. Oil pump system.
Second here.
Further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor? Nick, are you frozen? Okay, that's unanimous excavation. Number eight.
Okay, that's neat. As you all know, we're moving forward with your for the new Scale House building. The building is built, it's sitting in Georgia right now, trailer ready for delivery. Will be expected by hopefully in a month on days approvals. The excavation, Mr. Joe Hossi, very familiar with this site, and what needs to be done there. And this exhibition work will be to dig the footings and what have you for the building. And to prep the actual building site, and he'll be working in conjunction with the concrete contractor. To make sure all the safety stuff here, because you know it's a little complicated of a site to work on. So Joe Hossi is also going to help us. Get right through all that part. We're not any problems with the liner and any of the other utilities that are being ground running generally.
Any questions on this item?
Just a question, and Tiger and I already spoke about this, maybe if for our next meeting, not not necessarily related to this, but if we could just get a. Sort of a total listing of our car.
I sent that to you this morning, Kathleen.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, just before the meeting. I promised you I was going to get it.
Well, good.
It's great, so.
So maybe we can share with our other selectmen, just get a first perspective of how much the total cost of the the different expense line items on this new Scale House.
What is the total cost, Tiger?
At present, we have a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars slated. Yeah, we have some additional work that needs to be done for fiber work and things like that, so it might go a little bit above that.
And we are going to bring gas up to it, so it'll run on gas for heat up there, not propane.
Any questions, Nick? Yeah, tell me.
In the budget?
I think next question was, is it in the budget?
There's there's funds available for this, correct?
Right. For both this and the next item.
Right.
I move to approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Hussey Brothers Escavating LLC for a total of thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. For excavation services for the new transfer station Scale House Building. Second?
Second.
Kathleen seconds for the discussion. All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, number nine?
Okay, number nine, this is for the actual concrete work for the footing and the walls and the slab for the building to sit on. With Pat McGill. Pat McGill is going to be installed in the building also for the for. Who's delivering, yeah, who's delivering the building, so he came in with a nice over number for the concrete work, and he knows exactly what has to be done. So it's kind of nice to have this guy take ownership of the concrete work and the actual place of the building on the other side, so. We're asking that we get this approved for Pat McGill for the twenty eight three eighty to do the concrete work, concrete work.
Who's Pat McGill and did this go to bid?
I got the three quotes. The other two were Pat Mumber Construction and J.J. Concrete. The high was thirty six thousand seven hundred. The next one was thirty one thousand seven seventy five, then McGill came in at twenty five thousand eight. Plus contingency, I'm at him. So we've seen his work. I went and looked at some of his stuff that he's done prior to going down this road of a new Scale House, I've seen the buildings, I got the touch field, I took pictures, we reviewed it at Public Works.
This is the one that's in Cheshire too, right, Bill?
Yeah, it is the one that's up at the Cheshire Bus.
For the bus depot.
Yeah, bus depot, yeah. Yeah, they're they're nice. They're built very, very nicely because they are transported over the road, so they're heavily constructed, completely finished, so.
You talked about the building?
Well, the building, yeah, so the building comes in two pieces. And once the concrete was done, they'll set it with a crane, and then this guy ties the building together, does all the additional work on the, it's part of the contract of buying the building. But for the concrete work, he also does concrete work because he's a general contractor, so we got him to give us a bid on this price. Falsely, I should say, for doing the concrete work, he said, yeah, he'd love to do it, can't open any schedule, so we got a question.
Any further questions?
None here.
I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Patrick McGill. In the amount of total amount of twenty eight thousand three eighty for the installation of concrete footings and walls for the new transfer station Scale House Building. Second.
Second.
Kathleen seconds for the discussion. All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Who's doing localized repairs?
That would be me. This is an annual contract that we have with New England Paving. We usually break it up into two phases, a hundred thousand dollars each. This is for phase one. This is for. What we team is localized repairs, those are utility cut repairs, curbing driveway issues, things of that nature, anything that has to do inside our right of way of an asphalt nature. New England Paving's done excellent work for us since dating back to two thousand and eight. They were the low bidder for a number of years, and then we determined that the best way to move forward was to. Be on a time and material basis, and that's been a. Status for since two thousand and eleven. We'd like to continue the contract with New England Paving for this year for at least phase one for a hundred thousand dollars.
How is material pricing, Tiger?
Material pricing is has gone up, not substantially, but has gone up each. January one, everyone has a cost of living increase, so you have that, and then you have a little bit on the oil prices are starting to climb again. You don't see the oil goes, and then you see the commensurate rise right away. You'll see it subsequent. But there are, the material has risen in cost. Our first set of paving bids came in, they were. On the order of eight dollars a ton higher than the previous year. We'll see on our next set that goes out on Thursday. We'll see exactly what happens there. Norwalk and Westport just went out. I mean, I'm waiting for their numbers to come back to see exactly where they came in at. But we are, we're going to hit a sweet spot on that portion, that paving portion, since there's contractors that didn't win those bids that are hungry for ours, so.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify that? Is that? I guess my question is, is so there are others that might be competing with New England?
That's for that's for our local roads projects. That's not for this, not for repairs. I'm sorry, two separate.
Check.
Separate situations.
Okay. Okay, alright.
Which is uh just, you know, kind of wrapped into the whole cost of asphalt and and uh the work itself, you have to look at it holistically.
So um, maybe if I may suggest, um, at some point, maybe for next year, when you're thinking about this again. Given you've had a great relationship with New England Paving, as I understand it, um, for twelve or so years, and then maybe it's just good best practice to uh maybe think about for the following year. Whether opening this up for bid, just declare, I'm sure they've been terrific for you, but just as a double check of that.
That's fine, we also, we, what we wind up doing is going out and measuring some of the patches and then seeing exactly how much it costs on a time and material basis, and then equating that back to a square footage basis and then comparing that to bids in other towns, so we have been doing that in uh.
Yeah.
And we find out that we're still um saving money.
You are, okay.
Yeah, yeah, well, when when they typically go out to do a patch and then a patch and a patch, there's a lot of um stop and go, not a lot of flow, right? So they they have to build that downtime into their costs. Where on a time and material basis, they don't have to build that time, that downtime into their cost. So that's how we got into the the situation originally was to, we did an analysis and found out that we were would save substantial amount of money if we went, if they were the low bidder, and then if we went to a time and material basis, we would actually save money on it. So we do do the analysis, but we can certainly look at going out.
Well, I imagine other other providers would do the time and material basis as well.
They would, yeah. We haven't found anyone better, but yes.
I see, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move approve request from uh Public Works to enter to a contract with New England Paving, the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for phase one of the localized repairs project.
I'll second.
Second year.
I'm sorry.
Nick, seconds, um, I I have a discussion on that. Is this part of the bonding projects to?
No, these are uh, this is um tax-supported capital. Um, actually. Uh, now that the the limit is different, it probably is, yes, it's a bonded item. In the past, it had been a tax-supported capital item.
Okay, um, all favor of this item? That's unanimous. Um, is that, thanks Nick. Hello, whether your your screen is frozen or not, so. Uh, next item is the mead ball, mead park pickleball courts.
Actually, for me, everybody's screen is frozen.
So the uh for the mead park pickleball uh court project, uh the Park and Rec Commission a couple of years ago asked us to go out and take a look at um read uh basically removing one of the tennis courts, the uh, the all-season court. And putting in pickleball courts instead, pickleball is probably one of the fastest-growing sports in the country. Um, we're behind our neighbors as far as uh court installation. So we took a look um at different um proposals and different ways to attack it. The existing court itself um is beyond repair and needs to be removed. Uh, we reached out to Hinding Tennis Courts, um, who did the high school. Um, they have a source well contract for installing tennis courts on um. What we need to do is we need to put in a uh post-tension concrete, um, basically a slab, almost like a structure um over the area. It will combine both the existing all-season court and the backboard area. They're right now at different grades, we'll combine them into one continuous grade and install five separate courts. Install the backboard um itself. Um, and then we'll refence the area, um, and then we'll have some additional room for possibly a patio and some benches and tables. Um, up there, since there's exist, there's space, the the existing court is oversized, we won't need that area uh moving forward. So Hinding came in at a cost of a hundred and fifty-seven zero one nine, we added a fifteen percent contingency of twenty-three five fifty. Uh, the existing backboard itself was in disrepair, uh, and needed to be removed and replaced. We asked them for a cost for a new backboard of fourteen thousand nine thirty-five for a total cost of a hundred and ninety-five thousand five oh four. The funds are currently available. And we'd like to move forward um with this project, we're hoping to get them started and um and hopefully a a a summer um opening, late June, early July opening.
Any questions? I move.
I'm confused, wasn't?
Thank you, froze. Nick? That internet service.
Yeah, can you hear me?
You froze again.
Didn't we talk about this last week or two weeks ago?
Yes, we did. We uh, we had a, we had some concerns from um a resident at uh about noise. Um, its location, uh proximity to neighbors, we did an analysis um whereby we we uh took from the center of the court out distances to uh existing neighbors, closest neighbors, two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet away across the railroad tracks. The uh pond surface itself of me pond is three hundred feet away, the out of lodge is three hundred feet away. Uh, and then we we uh, uh, as part of that, we're looking at oversizing the fence posts. Uh, the new fencing that are going in, so we can actually place screening on it, uh, that will help us with noise abatement. John's done a nice job reaching out to vendors for um some noise abatement materials, which should then help uh dampen um that sound. Uh, we did look at other locations in town, but we feel that this is probably the best location, given that it's um already located in a tennis facility. Um, the the monitor is already there for the hard uh, for the hard truth courts, and then he can monitor the the use of the pickleball courts as well. Um, so we felt it, uh, given all those uh circumstances, that uh this location was the best location for a uh pickleball court installation.
But is pickleball always serious tennis?
Yes.
Hey, Chair, I could jump in if you want. We plan to offer, we have a reservation system for our tennis courts, and so what we'll do is we'll make it available for residents, so they can make a reservation play on the pickleball courts. This way we can keep the courts for our local residents and not have a everybody not at town come in and try and play in our courts. My tennis tenant is there from eight AM to eight, nine PM, eight PM, nine PM, so we can monitor that whole twelve hour period.
Nothing further? I move approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Hinding or Hinding, Hinding?
Hinding.
Hinding Tennis Courts LLC in the total amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand five oh four for pick, installation of pickleball courts at Mead Park. Second.
Second.
Kathleen, seconds for the discussion. All favor? That's unanimous, going on to Kwanis.
Thank you.
Park uh playground fence.
So this is the fencing that surrounds the playground at Kwanis Park? Uh, for a little while, it's been um in disrepair, it's held together with some zip ties. It's functional, but uh needs to be replaced in meeting with the neighbors and the subcommittee from the Park and Rec Commission. Who um, the Kwanis Park Subcommittee, this is very high on their list as a a place uh, as a as a needed um change or needed replacement. So Steve went out and asked Cannon and Rustic Fence to give us a price, they were the ones that did the work at Mead Park Playground. We're looking to put in a similar installation, a split rail fence with a black pool mesh wire insert um and four separate walking gates in and out of the uh, in and out of the area. They did a nice job at Mead Park, we'd like to keep being kind as far as uh the type of fence that's around the playground, so you know, Mead Park, oh, there's the fence, there's the playground, Kwanis, there's the fence, there's the playground, so uh Cannon's uh price is twenty-four thousand five thirty, we added a contingency of thirty-six seventy for a total of twenty-eight two hundred. Funds are available, um, and Ganon can start pretty much immediately. And hopefully we can finish before the the start of the uh summer season.
Questions?
Done here.
I move approve the request of Public Works to enter to a contract with Ganon Rustic Fence in the total amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars for fence replacement around the playground at Kwanis Park. Can I have a second?
Second year.
Uh, for the discussion. All favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
And Tiger has gotten um bids on the on the tree um pruning and removals. Um, Tiger, why don't you explain them since you just emailed them to people?
I, I will, thank you. Uh, it came in as as uh, as the meeting started, so I put together a memo, sent it to you. Um, it is for eleven separate locations, uh nineteen trees. Uh, there, the majority of them are um diseased or dying or dead. Um, there are two that are, uh, this might be the subject of a tree hearing, those are along Elm Street. Adjacent to the railroad uh station, those, we're looking to redo that sidewalk stretch there. And then beautify the parklet that's there, that there's a nine eleven memorial in there, and we're working with the Beautification League on that. Those trees have taken over the uh, the snow shelf and are now damaging the sidewalk. And are starting to damage the entranceway to uh the station itself. Those are the only two that are possibly under contention. Um, we went out to six separate bidders, we received two bids back. Olmstead Tree being the low bidder at twenty-seven thousand nine eighty-five, Mill River came in at thirty-six two sixty-nine. Uh, and we would like to uh award the contract to Olmstead for twenty-seven nine eighty-five for this work.
Question?
Just the, um, sorry, I'm just looking at it now, sorry, Tiger, so that also. Am I missing something? The total says twenty-six, three, six, five?
Maybe I, maybe I typed it wrong, I apologize.
Uh, no, that's okay, just so on page three, which lists the three bidders. Those numbers are different than the, than the front one, the first page.
Oh, the uh, I apologize, the uh the top portion of the memo is to correct, the back is backup from the previous bid. I apologize, I rushed it and put it together and forgot that there was stuff behind it, the um, but we will verify uh, the number.
Okay, so these are for the February eleventh bid?
Oh, they're for the April second bid.
Okay. So this document, this needs to be.
It needs to be amended, it'll be amended and come back to you, but uh in looking the, at the Excel spreadsheet now from the bid, it's twenty-seven nine eighty-five for Olmstead and thirty-six two sixty-nine for Mill River. I'll amend the memo with the backup for both what the the trees that I just detailed and the uh, the breakdown of costs and send them to you. I apologize.
Don't worry.
I get for rushing.
So these are all primarily uh street-side uh right-of-way trees.
Correct. They're to tell you what they are, we have uh one seventy-two on Oak Lane, remove two dead elm trees, opposite one thirty Graham horn.
We have.
Okay. Alright.
No, these are, these are from February.
Right, no, the the April second, that's what I was reading right now, is April second, was one thirty Ramhorn. Twenty-nine Pequot, two dead white pines, five eighty-five ponus, a decayed sugar maple, seven hundred valley, a decayed maple. There are three behind the equipment shed at Lapham, an oak and ash and a black birch. Eighty-six Hoyt is remove a mulberry tree lifting up the sidewalk, sixty-six Fox Run, remove the decayed tulip. Elm Street Train Station, these are the two I mentioned, the two elm trees, forty-two Dabney, remove the ash tree, and one fifty-three River, remove two dead ash. Those are the eleven locations.
We have a number of broken trees at Waveney Park.
Bob is looking at that as well as a kind of a holistic look at Waveney, um, and then uh, we're working with sustainable CT. Um, they were able to get a big grant, uh, matching grant. So based upon donations, it will come in, the sustainable CT will match, and we'll be looking at uh purchasing some red maples, some different types of maples to to uh restore those areas in ma- in Waveney that uh uh recent storms have damaged quite uh, quite extensively.
Okay, but for now, we have this Olmstead contract to uh, to award, and um, so I move approve the request. Have I moved already, are we in the discussion or question phase? Uh, request from the tree warden for a tree pruning and removal as set forth in the memo of um, they did this morning. Or yesterday, Friday. Um, for twenty-seven thousand nine eighty-five with Olmstead Tree.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Done here.
All favor? Okay, thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
Who is doing? GFOA, Linda, you gonna talk about your success?
Sure, our success.
Well, your department's success.
No, um, the the first one is the GFOA Award for the Budget Book, and and this is truly a collaboration with with entire uh, with all the department heads, and so we started a couple of years ago to put together a budget book that's beyond just the line items and line numbers, but to provide, um, make it a communication tool uh for the public and for anybody interested in knowing what's going on, or when we go out for bonds, I mean, these are the things that um investors are looking for to get a better understanding, um, and a a spreadsheet of numbers doesn't tell the full story, so we started putting together this budget book. So it could serve that. Um, it has four main purposes, to serve as a policy document. To serve as a financial plan, uh, because it looks be- behind and forward-looking. Uh, to also serve as an operations guide and to also serve as a communication device, and so those are the four areas that are evaluated. So just to give an example, for each department that we have in the budget book, we include the mission of the department. We provide an org chart for the department, where the department fits, we talk about the goals of each department. We discuss the major responsibilities of the department, uh, we discuss any operational changes that are occurring within the department during the year, we have a discussion of recent initiatives uh that are going on within the department, uh, we provide information of any current recognitions that the department has received, both locally, nationally, or within their field. Uh, we talk about challenges that the department is experiencing and how we can address those. Uh, we list objectives, looking back what's been accomplished and looking forward. And then we also talk about how the mission of the department aligns with the values of of the town. Now, currently, we we align that with the P O C D uh that we have, so how do what they do um tie with that? With that, uh, we include staffing information and then obviously the budget information and some trend information of the department, and and so when I say it's a collaborative effort, um, I get, I gather this information from the department, so they spend a lot of time amongst themselves, putting all this together, and so what I do is uh, my department puts this together into a document that um we've started using for the past two, three years or so, the budget book. The budget book is sent for peer review, um, and independent reviewers look at this budget book, um, and then assign whether it's me- it meets uh the criteria that are set forth in terms of just being open, transparent, and so forth, and so this budget book for fiscal year twenty-one uh was deemed to have met to have met those criteria, and uh we were, we were recognized and and received an award, an award for that. I believe in the state of Connecticut, there's only five of us um that go through this um process of of providing this additional information um on our budget, uh, GFOA, there are about twenty-one thousand members nationwide. And so it is a small group of entities um that receive this recognition, and so just wanted to share that with you.
Good, congratulations, Linda, that's great.
Thanks.
Yeah, Linda, as you know, this, this is the Academy Awards of uh the GFOA, so congratulations to you and to everyone. Remind me now, is this, this is not your first time you've won this award, right?
No, we actually, this is our, this is the second one, we got one when we first went out and then we met the criteria, so this is the second in a row.
Yeah, yeah, well done. Congratulations.
So you're a double Academy Award winner.
That's right.
Right, Merrill Street, right?
I also want to congratulate Linda, you know, somehow or other, in the past number of years, we've gotten away from issuing an annual report for the town. And um, so this sort of suffice it, replaces that. Um, and uh, it's a great job and a lot of work, um, oh. So I thank uh, thank Linda and his department in particular, and also the department managers for for this award, and then next one is a group effort too. I know you would adjust the Moody's rating report.
Sure, so um, as you know, we went out uh this. Sure. So, um, as you know, we went out, uh, this past week for, um, combination of refunding bonds and new bonds. We went out for a total of about ten point two, uh, five point two in refunding and about five point two in, in new money issues for various capital projects, uh, that, that were approved in the five year capital plan. And when we went out for a bond rating, we received the, um, the triple, it was affirmed, the AAA, the town has held the AAA um, for some time. And, but every time you go out, uh, we are evaluated on this. And again, it is a collaborative effort as part of the evaluation. They look at the organization, um, structure, our financial management, our financial oversight with the various boards, uh, the flexibility to adjust, uh, real time to changes that occur. If you recall last year when COVID hit, um, the board, various boards were able to, uh, amend our budgets and, uh, approve one point nine special appropriation for the Board of Ed to, uh, react to COVID and, and make those adjustments. And so all of these, uh, items that, um, that they look at, obviously in addition to the relative wealth of the community, our healthy financial position, um, and just good budget practices that we've talked about, things like the budget award that I just referenced. These are all things that speak to the financial management of the town. Well, what this allows us to do when you have a good rating is obviously borrow at lower rates. And therefore on the refunding piece that we were able to do, we were able to save about three hundred thousand dollars or so in bonded interest payments. Um, the immediate impact is with the current year's budget that was just, uh, next year's budget that was just approved, we have about a sixty thousand decrease just in that principal and interest payment just for this budget that was approved. So those are already savings that we're beginning to see, um, into the year that, that we're about to begin, um, and some additional savings, um, over time. Uh, but again, this is, uh, it's a good, good to have this rating. It speaks to the credit quality of, of the entity. Uh, you attract different types of investors when you're AAA. Um, and we did well when we went to the market. The bonds that we recently refunded averaged about one point nine percent and we got them refunded at just about, uh, one percent. And then so those are real numbers and real dollars, um, and savings for the taxpayers. So just wanted to share that update as well.
Thank you, Linda. Great work. And, uh, also to the Board of Finance for their hard work to make this happen. So.
Kevin, just a quick question. Again, congratulations, uh, Linda. And, and you had mentioned, I think you said five towns in New Canaan get the GFOA award. How many towns at, excuse me, state of Connecticut, how many towns in the state of Connecticut, uh, are AAA rated? Do you know?
I'll have to check. I think maybe ten or eleven, but I'll double check and get that number to you.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Catherine, I guess, uh, the state of Connecticut went back to AAA this week.
For Moody's.
For Moody's, surprisingly.
They did. Um, they said that, uh, one of the, um, contributors was the fund balance. They, uh, I, due to COVID, you know, they spent less, brought in money and some of the federal funds that have come through the state have left them with a higher ending balance than what was originally projected. So, so that was a big factor and hopefully we could maintain that stewardship.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that thing, it's still not clear. You know, there's a press report which sort of extrapolated from something Linda had said in a meeting last week as to how much federal funds New Canaan will be getting, um, from this new, uh, what's it called? The, uh, Rescue Act.
Rescue, rescue, yeah, rescue.
But I, I think the state of Connecticut is getting ten trillion, not trillion, ten billion dollars. And, um, and, and we'll get, um, some money from the state from that ten billion and, um, and then a portion that's being allocated to Fairbrook County. So we haven't even, you know, they're working on the allocation formulas and stuff. And hopefully in the next two weeks, we're gonna have more definition of what those funds are. So. Um, moving on to item sixteen, appointment of, uh, a parking commission vacancy. Who's doing this? Me, I suppose. We had a vacancy in the parking commission, uh, Democratic slot and, um, the DTC put forward Drew McGarrettan, um, for term ending December one, two thousand twenty two, uh, fulfilling the term of Chris Herring. Um, any questions, uh, on this appointment, recommendation?
Done here.
I'll just add Drew's a commuter, uh, and, uh, I think he's gonna be a terrific add to, uh, the parking commission.
What's a commuter?
What's a commuter? Somebody who travels to Florida and back.
I move reapprove the appointment of Drew McGrath into the parking fashion for a term ending December one, two thousand twenty two. Is that two or two thousand twenty one Tucker?
It's two thousand twenty two is what, um, whatever. I'll, I'll verify if it's changed. I'll bring it back to you.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Uh, tax payments, uh, on the tablets or a few automobile and a few, uh, real estate? I, I move to approve the refunds, uh, on the tablets.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Tax overpayments, I just did those, uh, contracts, contracts on the tablets. Any questions? I didn't look at that myself. No questions? Um, moving on to, um, selectmen's comments. I would make a few comments, uh, first on COVID. As I announced last night, we've changed the format of our weekly communication to the uh, community, um, mainly because of cost. Uh, our, our Everbridge contract actually charges us a lot of money for voice calls. And, and there's a limit. We didn't realize we had a limit. So, uh, we're, but they don't charge us for emails basically. So, um, everyone who was getting an email will get the email, including those over seventy five. But for now, we'll continue the voice out calls, um, weekly on Mondays, uh, for those over seventy five. And, um, anybody who's missing the out calls, we'd be happy to add you to the, uh, to the list. But, um, uh, Governor Lamont's press conference yesterday, for those who didn't, didn't see it, um, the governor's, um, kind of steady as we go, indicating that we're gonna have parades and graduations and, uh, proms and, uh, more guidance will be coming out about that. And, um, but at the same time, there is, um, some growing concern, has been concern about the variants and, uh, on the other hand, um, our vaccination clinicians are going very well. We're gonna do seven hundred and twenty more doses this Thursday. And as we did last week, uh, Friday morning, rather than the Thursday morning at eight AM, we'll send out an email with signup slots for next Thursday, April fifteenth clinic at Lapham. That will be dependent on how many doses we get allocated from the Department of Public Health. And we also don't know whether they'll give us Pfizer again or, or Moderna. So Moderna is only authorized for eighteen and over. That's why the clinic next tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Thursday, this week will be, um, eighteen and, and over. Should we get, uh, Pfizer instead, we could, uh, the clinic next week could be sixteen and over, but we won't know that till Friday morning. So I remind everyone to watch for their emails on, uh, Friday morning at, at eight AM. And it's the signup genius. So, you know, there probably should be at least six or seven or eight hundred spots, uh, to, to reserve for next Thursday. It meanwhile, as I said in the out call, there is lots of availability in various other vaccine locations. Uh, importantly, Stanford Hospital, which is very efficient and, um, you can go into the state's VAM system and, and to find a location, also the pharmacies have, um, have, uh, appointments available. So, um, then, um, the Holman Towers, um, balloon float was scheduled for this morning at eight AM up on eighteen thirty seven Ponus Ridge Road. We have sent out this notice to the press last week. It, it's been postponed until tomorrow because of the, the, doesn't look that windy to me, but they, they were concerned about the projected winds for the, today. Um, so the, the balloon float is scheduled for tomorrow, uh, at eight, eight AM to four PM, um, approximately. And then finally, the, um, uh, there's gonna be a, a Chamber of Commerce sponsor, eleven AM Zoom call this morning to, uh, review the proposed bump outs on Elm Street, uh, which Tiger plans to bring to the police commission at their meeting. Is it next week, I think? And, um, I think that's all I have, but Kathleen or Nick, do you have any comments? Kathleen?
Just, sorry, just two quick ones on the, on the bump outs, and I'm not gonna be able to attend that meeting at eleven. But, uh, is, is that going to take up some parking spaces along Elm then? Is that, is that what's being proposed?
Tiger, you want to explain that it's, it's net zero?
Let's say it's, uh, well, it's a net zero and, uh, and it's actually a positive two if we, um, make the spaces nine and a half feet wide instead of ten feet wide. Our standard space is nine by eighteen. So if we went to a nine and a half foot space, we'd get a net positive two. If we keep them at ten feet wide, we would be a net zero loss because we're able to gain some. Because of the bump outs, we're able to then shorten down that twenty foot, that twenty five foot wide uh, zone specifically around Dunkin' Donuts whereby you have to have twenty five feet from the crosswalk. We're able to narrow that down a little bit and gain some there and at the South Avenue entrance. Uh, South Avenue intersection with, uh, with Elm Street. So there we gain five back. We lose five on the northern side, gain five on the southern side, net zero.
Okay, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And the only other thing I had is speaking of commuting, um, Kevin, you were thinking about having the Board of Selectmen at some point, uh, meet in person? Is that still on the plan? And if so, when?
Well, we've been working with IT to, to, um, plan on a, a hybrid approach, um, so that if, uh, people want to be on, uh, I, including the members of, of the, of, of the Board of Selectmen, uh, we could do that. Um, the hybrid approach under the governor's executive order requires that a limited number of members of the public, including media, be, um, allowed to attend. We're trying to figure out how to do that. But, um, hopefully for pops, possibly, uh, for our next being in two weeks, we would, we begin to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think that concludes everything. We have, Tucker, do we ever get any comments from public?
We have not.
And, uh, I therefore would move to be adherent at nine fifty three.
Second.
Someone said second.
That was Nick.
Nick? You gotta, you gotta look at your internet service, Nick. All right. Thank you all. Have a great day and, uh, and great week.
Thank you.